All right. Good evening. Welcome to the January 25th, 2022, meeting of the Dover School Committee. My name is Sarah Gutierrez Dunn, and I call this meeting to order at 6:32 PM. This meeting, this open meeting, is being conducted remotely, consistent with the Act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law by Governor Baker on June 16th, 2021. Information on how to join remote school committee meetings and meeting agendas are posted on the Dover Sherburne District website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, and please be aware that anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. First on our agenda this evening is community comments. Before I read the preamble, is anyone present who would like to make a community comment this evening? Please raise your hand if so. I'm not seeing any raised hands. Give folks one last moment. All right, hearing none, let us move on to our superintendent and assistant superintendents' report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to share a very short PowerPoint. We have quite a bit on this evening regarding our budget and financial updates. So I know we presented many of these items at our joint meeting, which was last Tuesday evening. So this is just going to be a brief overview to update the community and the school committee on some of our COVID updates. So first slide, please. So I have to tell you, the most fun I had, and I tell you this all the time, is when I get the opportunity to visit your schools. So low and behold, I believe it was last Tuesday, I headed over to Chickering, or it might have been Wednesday, and in your lobby, as you walk in, there were students sitting in what just what it looks like. Looked like a cafe. You see the checker tablecloths. Students were totally engaged in their individual reading. Some were using iPads, but they were totally engrossed in what the, what the event was, what the lesson was. And what would happen as they were in the cafe is they were taken, as you can see, one of our staff members who's collecting data on it, these are our first graders, by the way. And just amazing, they have their chef's hat on. So the chef would go and retrieve the student, they would leave the table, you know, go to work with the chef, you know, be brought back, and I just thought it was so innovative. I'm sure it comforted every one of these little kids. I'm going to guess it didn't quite feel like a so-called test, but really just a very comfortable situation where we could gather the data that's so important. So again, so much fun visiting, and I have to tell you, I'm not sure, we've talked about it previously, but over the winter break, you had a number of your floors, as a matter of fact, Dawn, where are they all finished at this point? I didn't tour the building, but the floors look just-
Everything that's been approved is now complete. They did the upstairs lobby and hallway over the winter break.
So it looks wonderful. So next slide, please. So this is as of today, and we're, we talked today in both our health and hygiene advisory and in our executive team meeting. We're continually looking at this, but I think we're really reaching a point, not that we're not going to continue to encourage, especially our five to 11-year-olds, who most recently became eligible for vaccination. But your rates are high across the district. We currently do not have the booster information, but we will be gathering that now that we're actually able to devote some time. And what I mean by actually able to do that is, I'm sure you're following the news with Omicron. The rates are clearly going down. We're waiting for our report this week, which is a two-week report. So we're not going to see a steep decline, but certainly we're feeling it in the schools. When I have our nurse leader Jill Fiedor say to me today, today was the first time I felt like I could address the needs of our students in the school with what we would call normal school nursing. So that felt great to actually hear that, you know, happening in our district. Our numbers are extremely high for vaccination rates. If you look at Chickering, 72%, Pine Hill, 79%, Middle School, 86%, and High School, 90% for our students. What I will tell you is when you look at that staff rate, we are, and I'm not sure this is going to be going forward, so I don't want to say too much about it. Previously, you heard me talk about that 80% rate to fill out the attestation form for unmasking. I believe there are going to be a number of other factors. So we do know the commissioner has set the date of late February, February 28th, for so-called DESI doing the mandatory masking. Remember, the ball is back in our court, once you get approval, which we do at the high school, for that 80% rate. I have not put in for any of the other schools, because it is staff and students together, you know, meeting that 80% rate. But at this point here, it is important that we continue to mask. It is one of our very strong mitigation strategies. And at this point, we will work with Health and Hygiene, our DESI, Department of Public Health, and I can almost assure you there'll be other measures we'll be looking at, and this could be sometime in the spring. So I'm not talking about this in the near future, but I say that, you know, cautionary, because we very well could be talking about it sooner than later, depending on the decline of the transmission rates and, you know, where we're at. So any questions on that? Okay, next slide. I know you've seen this a number of times. So the good news is, we did apply for our opt-in to the at-home testing program. We did that when it became available, I believe, on January 21st. We opted in right away. We got a form out to our families and to our staff. Basically, you have to opt in and consent to be a part of this program. Today, we received our first shipment, as we were promised. I was pleasantly surprised, you know, for our staff kits. So we're short a few, we're actually missing a box, quite honestly, but we hope that will arrive either by this evening or tomorrow morning. But we are able to get those out to our staff. It is not mandatory that they use this particular at-home testing program. But if they choose to opt in, they have to consent, consent to, if you test positive, being able to provide that information to us. The goal is, we're recommending, again, Sunday evenings, or whatever is the first day, to start the school week. If our staff and our students were to utilize that at-home testing program, that is a good start for us. So we, right now, are being told that we'll go through April vacation. So you see the dates up there, the 24th, the week for the staff, the kids did come. Next week, they should be arriving for our families. Our principals and Principal Reineman has put together a plan for each of the schools, where families will be able to get the test kits for their students. Our high school and our middle school are talking about plans to put them in the backpacks of our middle school and high school students to bring them home if the families have opted in. We, as far as our drive-through symptomatic testing, right now, it still continues. Today, I believe, and Kate McCarthy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we didn't have any sign-ups. That's a good sign, because again, the community, our students, were taking advantage of this, you know, most days, and it varied. But we made sure we worked the schedule. There were times we got a call and somebody could come at 1:00 PM. So we made sure that we were accessible for any of, again, our staff and students that needed to take part in our drive-through symptomatic testing. Obviously, consent and pre-registration was required. We are looking, again, there's a possibility that at some point we will stop this, and I don't want people, don't lose sight of the fact that we do this for our staff and students in every one of our buildings. So we were trying to take the load off our nurses in the buildings. We may get to a point in the next couple of weeks where that isn't the case, and we can get back to symptomatic testing being done in our schools. Also, the Community Mobile Clinic with Urgent Care is set to be completed. We really had contracted through the 30th, which, believe it or not, is this Sunday. Again, this has been an excellent partner for us, and I'm sure if there was a reason to stay, they would. I know their numbers are also going down as far as people that are pre-registering and signing up. Next slide, please. So these are your numbers. I mean, look at the people again in the community. So our drive-through testing, 124, since we started this on January 10th, and that is through today. 24 positive test results, our mobile clinic, 419, and 85 positive test results. And the mobile clinic was for our community members. It could have been for town employees in both Dover and Sherburne. It could also be for our staff members' families, all the while trying to keep our students and our campus as safe as possible. You look at the positive cases, I know Chickering has had a higher number. It's going down. I think yesterday, there was one. Today, I believe it was up to three. And again, not unusual for what we're seeing throughout the district, but the number is a little bit higher. You see the high school at 114, and this, again, includes our staff and our students, just to remind everybody. And next slide, please. And that's it. As I told you, it'll be kind of a short presentation this evening, so we can get to some of the important things. So let me open up for questions. We did have our Health and Hygiene meeting today, and I will tell you, we made an update. I know I reached out to the school committee on Friday. One of the reasonings, we had talked about after two weeks, we would reassess the spectator rule. You know, Principal John Smith, one of the things that we talked about, and I think the community needs to hear this, for the students to be able to come to the gym as spectators, there probably were, I believe, a little over 40 that took advantage on Friday evening, when we lifted that so-called spectator limit to just parents or siblings. And one of the things that we were hearing were, a number of our students are getting together as kids do socially. And rather than have them unmasked, you know, in a family home or out in cars, it made sense to have them at what we consider, again, a safe place in our gyms, masked, enjoying, supporting, you know, their fellow students. So in fact, we said we would continue to look at all of the mitigation strategies. I noticed today something came through. I'm just looking at it from MIAA, which had stopped handshakes among the athletes, and they're allowing that to be re-instituted. And one of the thoughts was, you know, because they're out there, you know, bumping elbows or things that obviously happen in games, athletic events, they felt that it would be safe to remind them, again, of protocols, but they could have some kind of an elbow bump or some kind of way for good sportsmanship. So I think we're going to start to see this, you know, all the while, you know, being very careful of our decisions. Any questions?
Kathy, I just had, just had one question. So it's great, great news. All the, all the numbers do seem to hopefully be going in the right direction here. Did anything come up at the Health and Hygiene Committee regarding return to school after a positive case? So testing back in versus coming back in just after the five days?
I will tell you that, you know, right now, Jeff, you realize that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has told us that that is not recommended, that it's when the symptoms lessen. But there was talk today, I'm looking at my notes as I'm speaking to you. We talk about a number of things. There was talk that that probably is a, a good practice, you know, to, to maybe offer that. We're still not there yet, but that could be a possibility, and yes, it was discussed today. I'm looking at some of the things, just to see if there's anything, you know, a lot of information, you know, again, about the data that we're going to be receiving. You know, the community transmission is still higher than we want it to be. And I want to be really cautious. I want to tell you that on Friday, I will be sending a note out to parents. One of the things that we're talking about, for instance, something like a carpool. So, you know, many times there are sporting events where things might be, I'm going to use hockey as an example, you know, might be out of town, and, you know, kids are carpooling, parents are, you know, allowing, you know, or carpooling to get their children to different places. So we're really going to ask, as we're headed in the right direction, be careful, because we are seeing some transmission. We know, crack the windows, you know, wear the masks when you have, again, you know, students from multiple families, you know, in a car together. So we're, we're trying to just remind people that this is not over. We're headed in the right direction. We've put a lot of mitigation strategies in place that appear to be helping us, you know, really kind of move forward and keep our kids in school. This week, I was excited. I look at it every day. The absent rates at every one of the schools, and it is, again, in a positive way, heading in the right direction. Same thing for our staff. So, you know, we are recovering, but I just want to remind people, we are not out of the woods yet. That was it for now.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy, for the report, and I just want to say, I love the Reader's Cafe idea. I thought that was a really nice way of lowering the stress for the, you know, for the assessments, and I think you get a better read from kids when they're less stressed, so I really applaud that method. So, and the kids, they did come home talking about it, mine did, so it sounds like it was a success.
And they were, they were so relaxed. I don't know if you saw a couple of them with, like, legs up, and I thought, this is just tremendous.
Yeah, fully engaged. So, yeah, it looked, it looked fun. And I, just going, those extra measures of, you know, wearing the chef's hat and the, doing, laying the tablecloths, that, that really does go a long way, so thank you. I wanted to ask, the, the numbers that we're getting daily, the case counts, are those where it was previously in pool testing that we were getting this? I'm curious, what the numbers, are those from home people calling and telling us that there's a positive case, or is it from the testing that we're doing, or is it the, or is it all of the above?
Do you want me to try this?
Go ahead, Kate, yep.
It's not really one or the other, but I will say what we're finding is there's more home reports from what the, the trend, we were just looking today, because the testing program we use, CIC, can tell us all of the, the tests that we'd put in and the percentage of positive and things like that. And I think what we were talking about, actually, at Health and Hygiene, was that, at this point, it's more of being reported, the outside test being reported to us.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you. Kathy, I'm wondering, it's very encouraging to see the numbers trending in the right direction. I'm wondering if you can tell us if there have been any other instances where you're seeing sort of a disproportionate number of cases in one class, and if we're continuing to, you know, sort of pursue additional mitigation strategies in that event?
We, you know, certainly, we talked about the situation at Chickering, which I believe we had two classes, which we really approached the same way. We weren't sure, and it was over a, more than just a very short period of time. It was over a couple of weeks right after vacation. You know, we jumped in and we were able to make the decision, once we were questioning whether it was a cluster or not. We tested everybody in the class. We were able to identify in one class a couple of cases. Continue to, I think it went from six to eight. I think you know that data, but we tested everybody else for a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, to get us to the rest of the week, and all were negative. So we have not seen that again. We try, I'll tell you one thing, we were just looking at. We were looking at the numbers, and I believe this, again, was Chickering. And we were taking a look at and saying, could this have happened on a bus? It almost looked like some of the numbers were on two particular buses. But as we looked at that, it was hard to really decide, because it's neighborhoods, are the kids playing together? You know, is it happening because they're, you know, friends outside of school? So we went back, though, and I think this is what you're asking, and we said, do we need to make sure that we have masks on the bus if there are students entering the bus without masking? You know, do we need to make sure that the windows, you know, are, you know, vented, so we have that ventilation in the buses? I know Dawn was following up, and I'm, again, I'm not saying this was the bus, but we start to look at information like that. So nurse leader, our principals, we're looking at the cases to see if we can come up with a rhyme or reason as to why it's happening, because like you said, Sarah, we would have to step in if we found it was a cafeteria table, and this is not happening, where the students had a particular, you know, we would have to take a look. You know, we had a situation where it looked like at the high school, an athletic team, but again, it was between, I think, a JV and a varsity team, and what we found out was, it probably, looking at the carpooling, you heard me just mention it, it was probably more related to that than something that happened while they were conducting, you know, the athletic event.
Can I just interject there one time, and I'll, I'll keep quiet on this topic, because everybody on this knows my opinion? But that case we're talking about in Chickering, it wasn't buses. It was for sure happening in that classroom. Like, there's no doubt about it. That wasn't from outside spread. Just because I was personally impacted by it, I know the circumstances around it, and that one particular case was happening in the classroom.
So I think, you know, Kathy, bottom line, we appreciate your vigilance in looking for these patterns and, and trying to certainly, you know, introduce additional strategies or mitigation where needed, or where it seems that there are patterns arising that we need to put a stop to.
And as Jeff said, you know, I'm not, I'm just saying, we're looking, we're, we're trying to see, you know, sometimes we know there's, you know, household transmission, not that it doesn't come into school and affect a wider group. You know, I, we've always been concerned, you know, making sure that our classes are safe. I wish, I wish I could say that there was zero risk. There is not zero risk, probably anywhere we go. So I hope you know how important your kids are to us. You know, I, I know it's been very difficult, so we will do the very best that we can. And if there's information, you know, I know you have reached out to us, you know, please share with us. You're very good about your constituents also reaching out to you, and that's very helpful to us. You know, we want our parents to be confident. Like I said, I wish I would, could say there is zero risk. I cannot say that.
Other comments or questions from committee members? All right. Okay, are we, Beth, did you have anything, or are we moving on to Deb?
We are moving on to Deb. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth. Thanks, Kathy. Good evening, everyone. Welcome back. It's been a very busy January. As you know, at Chickering, we've had a lot going on. And you got to see from Kathy's slide, one of the highlights was our reading restaurant. Our literacy team did a phenomenal job of staging our assessment time. Last year, we did a reading camp out, or excuse me, two years ago, we did a reading camp out, and we were up in the dome, and we had a little fake fireplace going, and the camping chairs and the whole thing, and flashlights. So each time we do a reading or an assessment sweep, they put a theme on it. And there's one coming for June, too. I'm not going to spill the beans, but it's just as exciting. Nice, and teachers can sign up and come in, and they do some of the assessments, and then they have everyone help them. So it's fun for the kids, and the teachers get their assessments done quickly and efficiently, which is very nice. So that's, that was a highlight. I was so glad that Kathy walked in that day to see it in action. It was, it was a treat. As you saw in my report, we've got a lot coming up in February in terms of high holidays in elementary school, one of which is the 100th day of school. Big deal. So we'll be doing that. We'll be inviting our children to accessorize for 100 with us, as we have had the teachers do in the past. March Madness, some of you may recall. Last year, we had different teachers read books selected by our literacy team and librarian, and then we actually had a bracket where books that we read were up against other ones, and they worked it through like a March Madness bracket to the winner. And then, using PTO funds, we bought a copy of the winner book for every classroom. So there was great excitement. It was all done virtually, so we recorded the books, so teachers could insert it into their day when it works. So that's coming up as well. We had our spelling bee, as you saw, and we continue with our professional development, my own Reader's College Teachers Workshop, which is launching nicely in the building. We've had over two-thirds of our teachers already participate in the professional development. We are expecting another seven or eight to attend this summer. We're expecting it will be virtual again, which makes it a lot easier for some of our teachers, young families, to attend. So we're looking forward to that as well. Some staff changing, and again, that, the support of PTO and the Read Your Heart Out Day, and Books From The Heart, which I always mix up the name, Books From The Heart cell coming up, which replenishes the classroom library with donations from families. They have an opportunity to purchase a book, and then it's dedicated to staff members in the building. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them, or try to answer them.
Any questions for Deb? All right, well, thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
So we move on, Dawn, to the warrant report.
To report. Yeah, so a couple of things on the warrant report to point out, just since we just talked about the floors. If you look on the warrant report, you're going to see three warrants that were capital projects. So you'll see the one back in December 8th, that was the, that was the, the Thanksgiving work that we did, where we did part of the floors, and then you'll see in January, the upstairs completion. So I think it's good to see that those were capital projects that were approved, and then they're paid through the capital projects account. And the other thing I figured was, was worth bringing up is that you'll see the S R 3 warrant for $66,000. And so we are starting to dip into that S R 3, and that was to purchase, we need to fill in on Chromebooks and iPads for some of those classrooms that either had some older ones, or we had some new students sort of move in. So that was a big use of our S R 3 that allowed us to, without having to go search for that money, purchase that technology that we need to sort of do what our day-to-day classroom looks like right now. So I wanted to just, was a good, a good reason to point that out, and you can also see the other funds that we charge things to throughout, throughout the month. And again, I always thank Mark for going to Town Hall and signing, which I think you went on Monday, right, Mark? Yes, good, because I had just dropped off some more, so you'll get to keep us up to date. So any questions on, on any of the warrant report? I'll move right on to your fiscal year '22 monthly statement. So we last met in November, so there's been a little bit of time that has passed, but not a lot of new information. Again, when you review your report, if you look for information that's in bold, that's the new information that I've added to the analysis. The, on the salaries, there are two things. One is, as you heard last week, we were able to bring on a sort of long-term floating nurse to help us out in many ways. And so that piece has now worked into your payroll. Luckily for you, at Chickering, you'd had a staffing change in the nurse line item, and that we had some savings from that staffing change that is able to absorb this increase. So it wasn't, it didn't cause you any negative variance in your financials. And then the other news since we last met was that our long-serving head custodian, Steve Honorado, did make the decision to retire as of December 31st. We looked internally to replace his position with an interim position. So one of your evening custodians, Joel Sterling, did step in to take over the, the head custodian position on an interim basis. We will post for the permanent position in May, and then decide, you know, at that point, who will then take over for the head custodian on July 1st. Steve is the only custodian Chickering ever, ever knew as the head custodian, and it was actually at the old, old Chickering before there was the new Chickering. So he, it was a, he's a, he's a legend that's passed on, but we're thrilled to have Joel step in, and he's already taken over. And not that you've ever seen the custodial office before, but it was like one of those renovation TV shows. It's amazing what he did. So we look forward to him, you know, progressing in the position and hopefully rise to the occasion and be the final head custodian come July 1st. We're also pleased to report, we have not been fully staffed with our custodians for a while now. But as of Monday, next Monday, we will be fully staffed. We've hired two new people, and I think it's going to be a great team. I think that it was all good change for us. And so we're really excited to, to say we've got at least two schools out of the four now that will be fully staffed in the custodial arena. On the expenditure side, just one thing is that we are now seeing negative variance in our student special ed services and supplies, and that's really based on the cohort of students. Some of our students need some additional services that aren't covered by our staff, but that we contract outside services for. So that's what you're seeing. but that we contract outside services for. Uh, so that's what you're seeing, those needs not being reported in your financials. Other than that, the, your operating uh line items expenditures look like we're going to be pretty much um in line with what we budgeted. What we have been able to do now too is give us a more realistic look of where we are right now. I mean, we're at almost, you know, end of January for added district. Um, and in like you saw last year where we were carrying a large uh negative variance, we look like we're sort of holding steady as to where we thought we were going to be um in that arena and that we're just seeing a really small negative variance of about fifty five thousand. And considering the ins and outs that can happen um in that category, uh, we feel really good that that's, that's where we've landed. You'll see that the placements aren't exactly where we thought. So you'll see some positive and negative variances between the different uh school placements. Um, but at the end of the day, we look like we're going to be holding steady to where our projection was. We are showing a negative variance in operating. At this point, we will not end the year that way. Um, so as we continue on and we have other variances um arise, um, and if we don't make up some of our negative variance in salaries, we will look to move some things to some of our grants. But we'd like to hold on to the grants and the ones that we have multiple years for uh for those years where potentially we don't have any access to taking care of things that we need. Um, so know that we won't end the year with a negative variance, but we're sort of letting it ride out. And so we have a better feel of where we're at and at the end of the year. Um, any questions on the monthly financial? Thank you.
All right. So next up is the um A C E D recommendation for fiscal year twenty three.
Okay, um, I will uh take that. Um, so I, I want to say that this was a, a very new process for me. Um, when I came on board, uh, Dr. Reineman and I, probably one of my first conversations was um looking at, I believe, six had been approved from the previous year. And at the time, Dr. Reineman had talked to me about the possibility of adding a specialist cadre and special education to also round out everybody having an opportunity to be um a, a teacher leader, a professional learning uh community leader. So um, the process when it unfolded and something that I think happens every October, probably didn't happen till sometime in November. Uh, Dr. Reineman appeared before uh the group uh put together in recommending um different stipends. And I want to liken that because I'd like you to hear the recommendation I'm going to make to you at this point. So for instance, um, Principal John Smith came before the uh group to talk about adding a knitting club with a stipend for students that were taking advantage of a club that had been ongoing at the high school. There was talk about um supporting assistant coaches in a different way that had been done in, in the past. And I'm talking at, at athletic events. So at that meeting, um, the committee, which is made up of uh some of your teachers, um, you know, serving on this committee, it was approved for these two additional positions for me to recommend to the school committee. So after conversation again uh with myself, the assistant superintendent, uh, Dr. Reineman recently, we were trying to equate these two members and also find equity across with uh our elementary school in Sherburne Pine Hill. So what I'm recommending to you this evening is this. I'm not recommending that we approve the two positions in the operating budget. What I am recommending is that one of these positions, so it would go from six to seven, your specialists would have um a leader uh for their professional learning community. They would receive that full stipend. This would also be the recommendation at Pine Hill to keep equity. Pine Hill also presently has six. I did not want to recommend at this point because again, I think we have some work to do that a full eight component go forward. The seventh again would allow us through grant funding, not put it in the operating budget, really piloted. And I enjoyed Dr. Reineman, and she can jump in, talking about some of the things that they had the specialists doing this past year. A lot of it was building a strong culture, you know, across all grades at the high school. It was a support to all of the staff. Uh, for your specialists, I believe you had new members uh on your specialist team, Dr. Reineman, and you were able to utilize that. I am going to ask you to put a pin in the special education recommendation. I don't feel at this point, we have fully uh discussed that um as an academic team as to how that would work. Uh, we are in discussions, but I am, so again, I'm recommending a seventh position for the Dover, Dover budget. Um, and I am recommending that one be put on hold. I have also shared this uh with our union of representatives who uh also were part of that committee. I, I hope that wasn't too confusing. Some of it is my confusion and, you know, my, again, um taking the opportunity after I saw how it unfolded and really having a deeper discussion before we go forward with recommending this to you.
Uh, Superintendent Smith, would you also like to address the FLESS uh leader position?
Yeah, I'm going to let you do that. Um, because again, this was your recommendation, Assistant Superintendent. I'm happy to read it. But I know you can talk about it from experience and the support that it will provide for both Pine Hill and Chikering.
Thank you. So at this point in time, we have five FLESS teachers across both elementary schools, um, which is a significant number. And believe it or not, our first cohort of FLESS students is in eighth grade, ready to go to the high school next year. So we have another transition coming. Um, another milestone in this program, which is very exciting. That said, when you think about our grade level teams, first grade, second grade, you know, we often have three, four, five teachers working together to ensure that they are, you know, on par with their literacy curriculum and testing and, and talking about students. We wanted to provide that same opportunity to our five FLESS teachers so that they could share curriculum, develop benchmarks for each grade level in terms of their progression through Spanish and the four competencies as they prepare for middle school. Um, so similar to the middle school and high school who have curriculum leaders for world language, we would like to offer that at the elementary school as well. And luckily, A C D, A C E D is in support of that. So we bring that to you tonight um to be part of the budget. I'm happy to take questions.
Questions from committee members? So to clarify, um, the action that you are looking for from us this evening is um to approve the addition of a PLC leader in the FLESS program and a PLC leader for specialist teachers, but we're holding for now on um a PLC leader for special education.
We could also clarify that the PLC leader for the special position is going to be a pilot next year. So we are going to fund that through grant money. So the PLC leader for FLESS, which we are, have vetted and, and put a lot of thought into um with your permission, go into the operating budget, whereas the PLC leader for specials would come out of grant money.
But I think at the end of the day, the one they want to approve to go into appendix C, because what you approved tonight is going to go into appendix C of the educator's contract, is just the FLESS position. If you're piloting, I don't think you want to vote to, to put a piloted position in appendix C, just to clarify, right?
But that's correct, and it will give, give us an opportunity to report uh probably, uh, again, the committee comes up again in October, so we will be reporting back to you as soon as possible uh next year as you're developing your FY twenty four budget.
Hello.
Mark?
Um, thank you. I was wondering, this is a slightly new structure for me, but would the PLC coordinator for the FLESS program collaborate with the middle and high school director for world languages to ensure that there's alignments at the elementary and middle high school levels?
Yes, that's definitely um a hope. And I know Dr. Reineman is thinking creatively about the schedule so that whoever the FLESS leader is chosen between Pine Hill um or uh Chikering perhaps can have some flexibility in their schedule at the beginning of the day or the end of the day to visit the opposite school um or visit the middle school. And, you know, during any, one of our early release days, we often try to encourage our FLESS teachers or our world language teachers to get together either in leadership capacity or full teams. So um definitely that'll give us some leverage to make sure that there is that continuum. Good question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, I'd like to invite a motion to adopt the A C E D recommendation for fiscal year twenty three.
Jeff Cassidy, so moved.
Is there a second?
Colleen.
We'll give it to Colleen. I think you were
We always.
Just that much faster. Um, thank you both. Um, any discussion? All right, um, let's go with a roll call vote. Uh, Jeff?
Jeff Cassidy, yes.
Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Mark?
Mark Hilly, yes.
Liz?
Liz Grossman, yes.
And Sarah Gutierrez Dunn, yes. All right. Um, and so now we move on to the continued discussion on the proposed fiscal year twenty three operating budget.
Yes, so this is part two of what we started back in November with um the, you know, the full uh rollout of a version one point O. Um, I have included a couple of new documents for you. So just quickly to summarize those, um, we take the total number that you approved back in November and show you any adjustments that we're going to make that we are proposing to get you down to a new uh proposed budget. Um, we were, provided you with the uh five-year enrollment projections. So you've got the ten-year analysis with the five years worth of um enrollment projections. Remember, we use a formula that's looking at in-migration and out-migration um as of, with using October first as our uh point. Um, I've also uh presented or provided with you sort of a roll forward of our added districts so that you can see the composition of uh what we budgeted for fiscal year twenty two, um, our ins and outs and where we're projecting ourselves to be for fiscal year twenty three. And then before we finish tonight's discussion, I will revisit with you um the fiscal twenty three capital budget and will be asking you to approve the revised number so that we can continue that process. That process moves at a little quicker pace um with the towns. And so they're getting close to finalizing um their uh capital budget for across all town departments. So I will be asking for you to approve that um uh before we end tonight. So uh just to get started, if we want to look at some of the proposed budget adjustments that we are um bringing forward tonight. Um, as you recall, I mentioned um that there was going to be uh some system upgrades that we were going to be undertaking and that there would be a number coming forward. So at the end, as we've discussed, as we have discussed those uh further, I'm bringing forward two of those upgrades that we're looking to fund through the general fund. The first one is the upgrade to the website. Um, and the second one is an upgrade to something sort of not educationally related, but it's our financial systems here. Uh, we are uh housed on a server here and our software company is no longer sort of supporting um survey, server space um clients, but we have to move everything up to the cloud. And so there is a cost for that uh that migration. So those two financial system upgrades shared by all three districts is resulting in a twelve thousand dollar increase uh in the technology line item of the Dover school budget. Uh, the second um addition is what you just approved. Um, that is the stipend, um, the, the Chikering share of the stipend of the FLESS PLC leader. Uh, so now I'll be able to take off pending approval since that has been approved. Um, the next thing that we typically do in this version of the budget is take it um no, sort of take advantage of any retirements that we know. And so we do have some retirements taking place um at Chikering that are confirmed. And so we are working to our budget a savings of forty seven thousand five hundred dollars for those positions. Um, and as um Kate and her uh um team presented at the meeting last week, we're also looking to add a point five social emotional learning specialist, uh knowing that that has been a piloted position that we have uh funded this year um and sort of have seen the benefits of that. So we're looking to add that to the general fund. We're also looking to add a, a point five adjustment counselor. And that's another position that's being shared across um both elementary schools. Um, in, in addition to um the point two five floating nurse that is being shared by all four schools. So each school is picking up point two five of that. I did, um, as we did uh in November, provide you with a little more bullet points about each of those positions. Um, the rationale for it, um, a little bit of what it does uh that we're sharing it and also what the cost was going to be. Uh, so I hope you found that uh helpful. Um, and so now you've sort of got a big document that sort of summarizes for you all the positions that we um are bringing forward in this year's budget and um sort of the, the total cost. And I want to share a slide with you that um I prepared for warrant tomorrow night that I think will be helpful to sort of see, there's a lot of ads, but to sort of frame it a little bit better. So let me find it here. Here we go. Okay, so if you, if you look at um the Dover guidance, uh warrant guidance, they, they looked for us to be um level service. And any new positions that aren't because of uh level service needs, those, those are so, sort of our true ask. So if you look at all the additions that we're putting into uh the in-district staffing additions for the general fund, we have some staffing additions due to enrollment. Uh, so we added the two classroom teachers based on need of census. That included point four F T E specialist to cover those new sections. You can remember, we picked up a little bit of FLESS and a little bit of uh gym. We've uh picked up two educational assistants needed to cover those sections. And we've also not, we don't have in this year's budget, but we're um proposing for next year's budget, an extra special educator due to the volume of I E Ps. So we look at all of those additions that you're doing really is to maintain the level service at Chikering. That is to keep in policy, but to keep in line with your policy for your class sizes of seventeen to twenty-two and our normal operating standards. So those are actual asks that we need to continue the, the um goal of level service at Chikering. There's another group of additions that we're doing. It's really a change in student needs and in a way to sort of enhance the education that we're providing at Chikering. Um, that would be the combined math and S E L specialist. So we're doing a point five of each. So that's a one point O. Uh, we, remember, we picked up uh the extra B C B A just to sort of uh uh cover the needs for um the current students cohorts, the point five in the adjustment counselor and the point two five floating nurse. So those are sort of the new positions that are being added that we're sort of asking for above level service. So that's about a hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. If we look at the salary reductions though, that we had both due to staffing changes in this current year and some of the retirements that we know are coming forward for next year, we have salary reductions of about a hundred and forty thousand. So if you sort of look at that formula that we're using, uh, we're looking to maintain level service budget by asking for the two hundred and eighty thousand. And the new ask that we have to um improve and enhance our services are really sort of offset by salary reductions in other areas. So that's not necessarily looking uh for new money. I thought that was important to break out because it looks like we are asking for so much. Uh, but at the same time, a lot of it is predicated on the, the number of students who are attending um Chikering. So hopefully that helps a little bit. And I, I think that slide, like I said, Cam, I put that together for, for you guys, but I wanted to make sure I shared it uh with you too, as you go out and talk to people and you, and you see a large um um number coming from Chikering. Um, the good news is if you look at our added district, which is also part of your budget, you remember it covers ages three to twenty-two, we're seeing a significant reduction in that added line item. Um, and it's, it's much as half a million dollars. So I did not plan this, but at the end of the day, the Dover school budget is only going up by a hundred and twenty-six dollars. Right? Okay, Cam likes that. Um, so if we just look at your um enrollment projections, I think that you'll see that we are comfortably sitting on being able to have students to fill the twenty-six sections that we have um budgeted. It may not be the same number in each grade, and that's what we see. We see cohorts that come in a little larger than other cohorts. And so those staff members will be allocated to where the numbers will be. If you look at your kindergarten, it's projected to be anywhere in the high eighties to ninety. So I did put a little sort of cheat sheet down at the bottom of that um sheet for you to say, okay, so if our class range is seventeen to twenty-two, if we have three sections of a, of a grade, four sections of a grade or five sections of a grade, what is the range based on our policy? So if you look at, say, for example, that first grade next year is projected to be, you know, eighty-eight to ninety, then you're looking at we're going to need five sections. Well, fortunately, if you look at our fifth grade this year, we have five sections. Fifth grade next year is not going to need five sections, so there's a section that we will then move to first grade next year. And then you've got one section that has five that will continue probably to progress with that five up until fifth grade. Kindergarten is the number that, you know, at this time of year, we still don't know exactly. I think last year we thought we were going to be in the sixties and we ended up with eighty-three. I do think that was an anomaly. I, we, I look back for the last five years, we've never seen that kind of jump based on the census. We are looking at a census from what the town hall is telling us right now of about fifty-eight. And so looking at the non, looking at the year, not including last year, we usually see about a ten percent increase over that because that couldn't tell you, we've got kids who hold back. You know, we've got people that we might not know about, so that's why we put a number of sixty-five. That strictly is just sort of a placeholder right now. You're going to be covered. If you, you're really going to be covered from anywhere to sixty-eight to eighty-eight. So if we get another surprise this year, we're going to have, right now, we're looking at four kindergarten classes. You're going to, we're not going to have to be, you know, holding our, crossing our fingers and holding our breath. We're going to be fine. Unless it goes over eighty-eight, but I don't think it will do that. But so we feel like we're in a really good position to not have to be sweating it out this spring and over the summer wondering if we're going to have to add classes. So hopefully everyone's comfortable with that, and you can see the numbers, you know, sort of projected for the next four years. Any questions on the in-district before I jump in and just go over the added district schedule?
Just a quick question, thank you, Don. This is always really helpful, very, very detailed, and I like the walk sort of like where the offsets are. The one question on the offset was, as you have teachers retiring, they're obviously at the, at the highest step level of salary for their career. How do you budget for the new positions? Like what step do you, there's got to be a range. I'm hoping we're not only hiring like brand-new teachers. Some of them are great, but hopefully we have some qualified people with some experience who want to join us.
Exactly, and we, we had that discussion in our executive team this morning, that's sort of ours. So at the elementary level, we probably look at like a master's like three, two, three, four, something like that. At the high school, on the, on the kind of side, if we're looking to replace like a chemistry teacher or a math teacher, we probably budget a little higher. So we're looking, we're not looking for someone right out of school that we budget for something that's going to give us someone with a couple of years of experience. But I will say that when we experience retirements and having sort of fixed income, you know, revenue in these two towns, that is a, an opportunity for us to reset a little bit. And that's what keeps us able to balance our budget every year is the, is the transition, you know, the retirement of the higher-step teachers down to the lower. And I will say at the elementary level too, a lot of times we hire our educational assistants who've been in the school, know our curriculum. And I will say definitely at the elementary, that is one of our biggest recruiting feeds is our educational assistance. So that allows us to get sort of someone who already knows our culture and, and our curriculum at a lower rate because they're trying to break into education. But we're really getting, you know, more than that based on the, more than we're paying for in a way. But that's sort of, we do try not to shortchange ourselves, but it's an opportunity to reset sort of the salary clock for us as we continue to negotiate contracts and maintain the budget year to year.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
So if we look, I just wanted to quickly walk through the added district schedule that was provided for you, just to highlight a few things. And so we look at the added district in sort of a couple of different categories. We look at pre-K through five, we look at the middle school. And when we get to the high school, we, we look at it in sections of like nine to eleven because we like to look at the twelfth grade as a standalone because that's where you can look and say, okay, so in fiscal year twenty-four, if we've got a lot of twelfth graders, at least half of those probably are going to graduate, and so you'll probably maybe see some relief. Some of those twelfth graders though will move on and become part of the twelve-plus category. But by looking at your segments, at least you can see what's coming. If they're out of district in elementary, they could be one of those more severe cases that we could, probably can't take care of in the district, and so you would see them, you know, moving all the way up the grade. So I think it just gives you insight as to what comprises your, you know, two-point-one-million-dollar budget for just tuition. If you look down at the bottom, there's a roll forward where you can see we budgeted for twenty-six district or twenty-six placements in fiscal year twenty-two. Two either, two graduated and aged out. We had three move out of districts. We have two that we were fortunate enough to return to districts. We're, we're, that's always, you know, one of our goals, and we had two new placements. In addition, we always budget for about three percent of tuition increase. And we, during the year, we could have changes in placements or additional services for some of the students that are still out, out of district. So you can see that our, how you can roll forward those numbers to end up with a negative our decrease in our added district of almost four-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Of course, if you're decreasing your placements, fortunately, that's going to also decrease your transportation because we have fewer students that we have to transport. So for the first time in a long time, we're actually seeing a reduction in our transportation expense, which is a, a good thing. So we're down to three-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand from the four-hundred-and-fifty thousand that we budgeted last year, which probably is actually going to be over budget when we finish fiscal year twenty-two. The good news on added district transportation now is, as you recall, when I mentioned circuit breaker in your current year report, for the first year, this year, we actually received some circuit breaker reimbursement against transportation. And that is to follow the, the, sort of the legislation that's been put in place, we'll see an increase in that for the next four years, up to the point where we're getting a hundred percent of what's over the threshold for transportation. So that's going to be a huge relief to sort of the Dover School District specifically, who spends more on added district transportation than we do our regular ed education. So it's nice that the state's finally recognizing the, the burden on districts for that and, and providing some financial relief through the circuit breaker. And then your, your estimate for circuit breaker for fiscal year twenty-three, just sort of based on the projections that we have of who the students would be right now is about nine-hundred thousand. So it is down, but again, you're going to expect your circuit breaker to go down if you're out of district tuition goes down. Okay, so I threw a lot at you. So that's why I wanted to make sure you had it beforehand, so you've been digested a little bit before you heard it presented. And then any additional questions that you have, Kate's here too, if you have any questions about any of the added positions to better understand. Let me just say though, that I know a lot of these positions that we're sharing with another school district being Sherburne. You know, there's, there's discussion that Sherburne's budget's a little tighter, and will they be able to absorb this and what will happen? I don't think we, we will find a way to make it happen because we feel it's so important for both elementaries to take advantage of these things that we feel are important for the education. So I don't think there should be any concern on the Dover side of things that something might go differently in Sherburne and it would impact you. We're, you know, we're going to work hard to find funding sources to ensure that these positions are at both elementary schools. Immediately because then they feed up to our, you know, our region campus, so it's really important to have consistency across the two elementaries.
Thank you so much, Don. Questions, comments from committee members? One question for me, Don. How final, if you will, are the projected out-of-district costs? Because, you know, the, the reduction there, the decrease there is a significant, a significant one. And so I'm just wondering, you know, based on the life cycle of commitments that families are making to, you know, tuition programs or what have you, is this number relatively likely to stay where it is, or will we continue perhaps to see fluctuation here?
So this is an arena that you, you never know where it's going to be. But the way Dover budgets and why we are more conservative when we budget for out-of-district, like I don't put into your budget any, you know, potentials or any, you know, something that's bubbling up because you budget a hundred percent of your out-of-district and you act as though there's no circuit breaker reimbursement coming. You're always protected by the whole amount of circuit breaker. So we could potentially go over budget by nine-hundred thousand dollars in your out-of-district before we would have to reach out to the town and ask for more funds. So to that end, we don't put any placeholders, any questionable costs because all it, all it does is drive up your operating budget unnecessarily, knowing that some years we give back a hundred percent circuit breaker. Last year, we didn't give back. We had, you know, we had to use some to cover the unexpected out-of-district, but that's sort of one of the nice protections that you have in Dover is that we don't have to worry as much about unforeseen placements because we know we have a safeguard there.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I also want to thank you. The slide that you had put together on our in-district costs and some of the additional positions is helpful to look at that as, you know, this is what we need because of enrollment. This is what we need because student needs have changed due to the pandemic, and this is how it's being offset. I think that was extremely helpful. Know that we, we owe it to our, our town to be fiscally responsible. But I think anyone who's living in the world today knows that kids have some additional needs that they perhaps didn't two years ago. And so I know that there was a, a great amount of discussion at our November meeting on how are we making sure that the additional social and emotional needs and other needs, counseling needs for kids are being met during this time. So I really appreciate the, the additional funds and the additional positions that, that are being proposed in that area. Any other questions, comments? All right, so I think then the, we'll, we'll move to, are we voting?
You don't need to. We'll, we'll take your vinyl, your final vote in March. Just knowing that the, the budget that we presented to the committee tonight will be the budget that we discuss with Warren tomorrow night. But though, we'll do a final vote on, in March. So there could be one or two more adjustments that come forward. We just never know. As much new information that we get, that would make us want to put forward an adjustment, either less money or more money, we have until March to bring that forward to you. And at that point too, we'll do a PowerPoint at your March meeting because that's your public hearing. So we know you invite the, the masses to, to come and hear the presentation. Then we close the public hearing and you guys will go back for your final discussion about the budget and the final approval. And then it moves on to the town's open hearing, I think the third Monday in March. So from there, it's out of our hands and it's on to a warrant and the town to take it to the final town meeting in May. But I do want to go over, I am going to ask you to approve the new capital budget, and let me just give you some updates. So we had pricing changes. If you remember when I brought the budget to you in October, it was, or November, we were still sort of, you know, chasing our heads a little bit from COVID and needed to go get some updated estimates. So the biggest, one of the biggest changes was the flooring. So where our plan is to do all the classrooms in the K-one wing. With that, if you think about it, that one actually has more square footage in it than the other two wings. So when we put the placeholders when we did this, we just took all the floors across classroom floors in the whole building and divided by three. So there is more square footage in the K-one wing. In addition, there has been a price increase for the flooring that we've been using since when we had the floors quoted and priced with our hallways and our, our lobbies. Based on that, the quote that we received at the end of December for the rooms that we want to do, which are twelve rooms in total, is up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So that's the place, that's the number that's holding that capital project placeholder for now for the K-one wing at a hundred and twenty thousand. On the other side, we actually went out and got an updated quote for our energy management system software upgrade. As you may recall, we're in the midst of a large upgrade here at the region. So the vendor who's doing the work for us here, we asked them to quote, you know, adding Chickering on to that system. And they happen to be the vendor that already services our, our EMS system at Chickering, which is actually even nicer. So they updated their quote that, our placeholder that we had, and their number came in at forty-nine-five. So we were able to reduce that seventy thousand placeholder down to forty-nine-five. The number that didn't change is just the added number we need for the cold water booster system, which is just a piggybacking the project that's already been approved in fiscal year twenty-two. So with those three new updated numbers, we're looking at a total capital request for Chickering of a hundred and eighty-six thousand and five hundred dollars. So if you have any questions on that, but I will ask you to approve the new number so that we can move that forward with your approval to the town capital budget committee.
Just to clarify, Don, so the, the number that was approved during our last round was one sixty-two for twenty-three. So we've got the, the additional money for the flooring, but it's an offset somewhat by the EMS software. Questions, comments? All right, I'd like to invite a motion to approve the capital budget.
Liz Grossman, so moved.
Ms. Liz, is there a second?
Jeff Cassidy, second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll vote. Liz?
Liz Grossman, yes.
Jeff?
Jeff Cassidy, yes.
Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
And Sarah Gutierrez Dunn, yes.
Perfect, thank you. And so you won't see that one again. That's, that one is put to bed and we'll move on to the town process. So thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, next up is the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes from our November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one meeting and the town report entry for the D S C. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Colleen Burt, so moved.
Second?
Liz Grossman, second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll vote. Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Liz?
Liz Grossman, yes.
Jeff?
Jeff Cassidy, yes.
And Sarah Gutierrez Dunn, yes. And for members' information, we also have a copy of the regional school committee minutes from November ninth. Last step on our agenda before we adjourn, any items that committee members would like to put out there for the March tenth meeting, which is our next scheduled meeting? Obviously, we'll be having our, our budget hearing.
And it's on a Thursday night, not to throw you off, so it's a Thursday that week because we try to get them all in. We have to get all three budgets all set to go to all the town processes. Like Dover always meets on an odd night in March.
Colleen?
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping we can follow up on some of our sustainability initiatives that have sort of been, you know, put on hold understandably for all of the other super pressing things that have been in front of us. So as we sort of tackle more of the COVID issues, now we know who our superintendent is going to be next year. And so if we could start raising some of these other issues back to the forefront, that would be great.
Thanks, Colleen. Liz?
Not something to add, but I know I've been quiet tonight, and I just want to say, Don, like the way you present that, it's so clear. It's so concise that like, it's a real testament to your presentation that none of us have any questions. So bravo, that is very impressive.
Thank you, Liz. That's very kind, thank you. Thank you, Liz. That's very kind. Thank you. You know, I think one of the positives that I bring to this role is I was in your seat and I know what I wanted. And that added district chart was something I always wanted when I was in your seat. And so I think that's the benefit that I, I sat there for six years, I, and I'm a financial person. And so I I try to give you what I wanted when I was in the chair. So I think that's probably a little bit of that. I've been there and I know.
It shows. Thank you. All right. Well, I think that's it for this evening unless there are any final requests for our next agenda. All right. Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Liz Grossman, so moved.
Second?
Colleen Burke, second.
Colleen, thank you. I will assume no discussion and all in favor, please raise your hand. All right. This meeting is adjourned at seven forty-three PM. Thanks all. Have a good evening. And we'll look forward to seeing the warrant committee tomorrow. School committee members, you're free to join us, though you need not. We'll, we'll be going over the same material that we discussed this evening with the warrant committee.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.